Okay, I will restart. We'll call since we are muted, apologies everyone. So Chair Delany. Vice Chairman.
Present.
Commissioner Tuckler.
Here.
Commissioner Blue. Absent. Commissioner Van Bees.
Here.
Commissioner Hugman. Absent. And Commissioner Wiener.
Here.
You have one.
Thank you, Casey. We take the comments on items done on the agenda if we have any member for the public wishing to make a comment. Please go ahead, raise your hand. So let's get going then. First item on the agenda is the Governmental Commission minute from last meeting. Do we have any comments? It is commissioners of the meetings.
I will take it up.
Just put it back on the one it was.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you though.
Okay, now I can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I will take a vote to approve the minutes for the May meeting. Chair Delany.
Yes.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuckler.
Yes.
Commissioner Blue. Absent. Commissioner Van Bees. Commissioner Hugman.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Minutes for the May. Are we gonna meet here?
Thank you, Casey. Okay, so we're gonna go through the work plan. As an accepted information items first, protection audience with an update. Where do we start with this?
Yes, we do have an update. That he and the last time that consultant had already provided draft preliminary tree list. And we went through and write in feedback and ask questions about that. So on May 12th, they provided the preliminary policy recommendations. And staff met with consultant on G and first to review outstanding questions regarding the tree list policy recommendations. The staff is currently updating our recommendations with regard to the tree protection ordinance. So we plan to meet with the subcommittee later this week. And we'll incorporate any feedback before we bring it to the environment commission. And that likely happened in August meeting based on the that it's coming from council about July.
Questions? Any anything you want to tell us that's kind of different surprising that align with what we were thinking or?
Yeah, I don't think we have anything. Much to share.
You guys are meeting, speak with the. Okay, so it's gonna be on the August agenda. And window, that's the other one that's chasing forward one.
So in window on May 10, Valley Water confirmed that they are no longer updating at window for the 2022 water adoption cycle. Which is what we had been kind of waiting on, but they're starting focusing on updating quality requirements in preparation for the 2025 cycle. So in light of that, we're gonna continue to conduct research and evaluate feasibility of the measures within their current following ordinance and check it ourselves with the 2022 codes. So we're currently working on researching period jurisdictions to see if they adopted a bundle of measures or something similar to it. And then looking at the 2022 code and looking at any overlap with that. So we're still in that that kind of research phase, bringing it back to our directors to get next step somewhat.
To both. Regardless of whether it's gonna be more updated or not.
I think I think that's a question right now. Other jurisdictions haven't adopted what is basically played, but maybe related measures. So we're looking into all of that and kind of break that information.
I mean, the real question is whether as a city, we want to have a water efficiency ordinance, but we develop whether we want to have it this year or we want to postpone it. I don't think it makes. It's my opinion. I don't think it makes any sense to postpone it. We have enough information to put something together. I would think. Right?
I think I think people are trying to think about that. This will also be happy to update the codes in 2025. So just making sure that we're not updating something that then has to be replaced with something else pretty quickly. If it's our age. So I'm not saying we're not doing that. We're just we're gathering our information and creating it at the director level.
So when you say updating the coast, putting about including that you which goes into 2012.
That's the next building code.
Yeah.
So we want to. And that's just like reach codes. It gets adopted with building cycle. So I think the consideration is if we were even to continue to research and potentially do something with the current window or something similar, when is it gonna get adopted by probably? I mean, earliest 2024 and then you have to start working on, you know, a new ordinance for the 2025 cycle. You don't know what Calgary is gonna say for the 2025 building cycle. So you may adopt something for a year, but then becomes outdated because Calgary has adopted some of it, maybe something different. And then you got to start the whole process. It's there's just I understand there's practical considerations for the timeline. So I think the question is whether it makes sense for us to try for the city to try and at this point, do something ahead of whatever Calgary is gonna say 2025. Or start, you know, it's it's just a if you can practicality question, because every time you adopted the ordinance and builders are getting used to that and then here later changing. Right? Potential, because you don't know, just like the three, you don't know what the new standard. Yeah, it's gonna be.
So is the 2025 update going to be something that's applicable from January of 2025 or is it something that's going from?
It gets implemented in 2026, right? 2025. Building.
Yes, it's 2026.
Yeah, so there will be two years.
Two other high years, I mean, two years potential.
Two years of that they're maybe possibly doing something on.
I'm not arguing against it.
Yeah, I'm just.
No, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and Valley Water let us know that some of the refinements they're making to the ordinance is is to reflect the state water efficiency standards. So if there's if Valley Water is the one you know, is working on this and has been working on this, saying, you know, wait until 2025, but it's with you know, weighs a lot for us. So so we're, you know, I wanted to do more research. They also let us know that no jurisdictions have adopted either whole whole coordinates or portions of it. So and that I think a couple cities have had existing municipal codes that were similar to some of the measures in that window, but none, nothing that was adopted after the first lot of work, it's the first step one of one ordinance. So when we're doing our research right now, looking at other cities, you know, we haven't seen other cities who have these measures and we're assuming that council will want to see you know, neighboring jurisdictions research as they did with the reach codes. We're gonna support the government for their next meeting to just see what you find in terms of what the other cities are doing. So they make a full decision.
Done. What you say so?
Well, that's what I was I could ask was what the status was with other communities. Have they adopted or were they planning? Especially adjacent communities like like Mountain View and Los Altos Hills is a little bit special, so Mountain View, Cal alto, you know, which are.
The area cities really sharing the same world in some way.
So yeah, but from the research we've done and looking at other cities municipal codes, I didn't see the almost out of the hills. I did see Mountain View and Cal alto who had certain measures, not all. But we we haven't reached out to those jurisdictions to see like, are they gonna wait for the 2025 cycle or? But I think that's something we can definitely do.
Yeah, they are something in process. It is one question probably for those. I mean, the real question for us is, you know, what direction do we want to suggest? You know, do we do we want to have some kind of water efficiency ordinance this year? Going to the council based on information we have now and, you know, like the model that that's, you know, a particular change I have done or I'm doing. Or whether we just want to wait until 2025 to to work together for the 26 plus cycle.
I I know that there's been many comments, that's all expressing interest.
Yeah.
And going forward. So I think, and you know, we had, we started to look into this subcommittee. I think there are certainly some low hanging fruit measures, especially our community around swimming pools, for sure, that wouldn't necessarily be that hard to implement. You know, some of the other interior water saving fixtures of gray water might be a little bit more cumbersome in terms of the building. I'm not saying it is, but you know, the scale of our type. I there definitely could be, again, low hanging fruit measures that we could adopt, you know, but adopt.
And as you can identify with with the strict goals already out there. So that yeah, there's stuff that's cheap right now. It's like we can talk about some of it. Stuff that is likely to get updated because conversations are already there in terms of earlier development. Yeah. Set upon.
So yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say is if we're gonna ask for to the agenda, I think it would be great before then to have another subcommittee meeting. Let's have to hear what the research is to this month.
And I think, you know, I think the subcommittee can handle sort of the research. I'm not going to speak for you on the subcommittee, but I think we're not there to I work with there to lighten the road in ways if it's possible. So can we can we agree to have maybe a meeting with you at the subcommittee to review where you are in terms of the research you've done and so on, and then see if there is something that you can work on together to bring something to the commission for review with some ideas in terms of what could be done without necessarily waiting until 2025 and implementation 2026, which to me seems a bit far out. It's we're talking about two hundred high years. I I don't necessarily think we should wait too long for to have audiences about water efficiency. I mean, if we can put something together, and I know there is now some council members that suddenly would want something this year, I think we should look into it. So you guys.
I mean, even if the decision is that there is not something that makes sense to a woman now, we should look into it. See what the options.
And I think we should let the council know where we stand with that, you know, because I think they need to. I think they're waiting for some kind of a decision or some kind of recommendation or something, right? So I don't think we should let it sleep too long. We should make a decision. Bring the recommendation to the council and let the council decide what they want to do, whether they want to follow a recommendation or something different. Right? So that that's trying to do that. That's right. If you could set up, have a subcommittee meeting, you guys get together, you review what you have. You talk through it. You see what else needs to be done. Maybe you share the work so that we go a little bit faster and then maybe, you know, it's better to lighten your load in some ways. And then try to bring it, bring the recommendations from you and the subcommittee to the commission. I don't know if we can do it by August. You think it's doable to to have that on the August agenda? I let you decide until your meetings, right? And then we can talk about that, but it's obvious to September, but I'd like us to keep moving on this at least. Go through the review process and then, you know, kind of make a decision whether that's something we want to move forward with or not. Right?
Yeah, I think we can bring that back in this discussion item. And then we're having conversations and charting.
Yeah.
Directors, city manager, all that. So I will chase and see what your.
I think, you know, it's just, we have a general agreement as a commission that we would like to see that move forward, whether the decision is to postpone or not, but at least have a full review of where we started, what can be done. Is that is that something you guys are okay with? Okay. All right. So let's do that. I think let's let's try to see if we can move forward with this and then come up with something that that's gonna make sense to present to the council. Any other comments on the on the water efficiency ordinance? Thank you. For the work plan items. So we'll talk about PPFA after that. Are there any other work plan items that we should discuss? I just have a question for you in general about bringing city operations, right? So I just, are you doing any work on that based on what was done at the end of last year or are you that's still up?
We are taking the electrification assistance work with us to see me. It's that they're researching. The feasibility of churches.
I'm talking about the city buildings.
Buildings.
Yeah. And so to remember the discussion we had like at the end of last year that we had as the variant, because assistance program to help us with a noted of other city buildings, at least the one we wanted to, right, that was started. And then that's something that's free. Right? So it doesn't cost anything to the city, just a little bit of city time, staff time. They had sent some spreadsheets to us that were, I think, and I may be wrong, was sent to the right partners to be able to fill down so that they can be around can start the assessment by looking at the energy once you believe in building and the equipment that's in the buildings and so on before coming for a site visit. So that was put on board actually at the end of last year because you guys came on board and then you know, people that were in charge on the staff side that shifted a little bit. So my question is, have you done anything of this or not?
We haven't moved forward, but they're still process yet, because we've got this on the projects. But we have started to have conversations around some of the projects and kind of here. Some based on the parts buildings and whether they're doing electric appliances and stuff like that. But so we we've started that conversation and we haven't touched back into our.
So I I just don't know with you have time to start. I mean, I can help you with this because I kind of started the process with many back then. Do we need to wait a little bit for you guys to have more time to do that? Or what can we, since now we kind of like in window? You know, with one, I mean, that there will be work and everyone doing production of it. As we will have the reach codes, we don't have a lot of other stuff from the work plan that that we're working on right now. So I'm, you know, happy to help you with that. I just want to make sure that the time what could be tuned to anything that is not doable on your side. So, you know, if we if we if we have to wait, we wait. I'm just saying. If if you're ready to go, I can help you because I kind of something in process. So I'd be happy to do that.
I think we have the resources to take it back up. I think it's it's just a matter of having that time. With our direction has been to prioritize street protection and we don't right now. So at least getting those to a point where the like we've done our research and we've given it something else. That's our priority and then we've also been doing a lot of solidness for it. So.
It sounds like this is something that you can pick back up later on in the year if the resources are available, but just reading the staff report and to get the work plan. It's the lowest priority that needed through the previous round of filtering every work plan. So it's probably appropriate to say can't jump into this now, but let's revisit it. Quarter. You have the right source, it doesn't sound like now trying to better prepare.
I think right now we can't. I think it also depends too on the next fiscal years list that we went through. And if there were some other items that were above that. So I guess that would be in conversation.
Yeah, I mean, we have it in the work plan for next year because we're, yeah, obviously. So that's one of the things we're gonna be taking into. That's fine. We we can. I'm just since we're going through the other work plan island, just wanted to make sure that we had this discussion and understand what can be done, can be done. If there are things that can be picked up now, we should pick them up. If we can't, then we we postpone, we do it later. I I just, it it's reasonably low work because it's just filling out some spreadsheet and then after it's all done by the end. So it's not a lot of work, I think, for for you guys. So something to consider. I let you think about it. You can talk to your direct managers. And then we can, we can read this. But if when you're ready to go, happy to just get, let's get in touch. We can get that moving pretty quick. Shouldn't take too, should be, should be moving pretty fast. Okay, sounds good. So let's wait a little bit. Anyway, summer is coming. It's gonna be very difficult anyway. So. All right, sounds good. Any other work on items that you guys wanted to mention?
I noticed that mentioned that there is some progress made on the city webpage. Item on the work plan, anything specific to call out since the resource page?
Since the resource page, I think that was that was the progress. We are part of the city staff update. So this we are we have an intern. So we are looking at opportunities for to create another resource major. Jason.
Okay. So there will be some updating of that, you're saying, or or some link, is your link to get to access it or?
Um, we're thinking about like what other resource pages could be useful, like commercial notification or something else. That he could just research on. Agree, something that I would say. But I know there's some other parts of the website that also seem updated and refreshing.
Good. I I had noticed that I thought the transport page could use some of this and I this is like almost a year ago now. I started to write proposals, but at the time we didn't have the access. So I could certainly forward those over.
That sounds good. Let's do that. All right, if you guess.
I assume there's no update on reach codes. Decision being made, been made yet.
No, we haven't seen any updates. We do know SPC is looking into some other pathways, which codes that like electric preferred option, some other things that may provide a legal pathway option for proceedings. So they're closer to work right now. But I don't know the cities of any of that.
You may know what's other cities are doing, those that are past their reach code before that can well, like with the effective like January first, 2023. So those cities that have the reach codes, you know, whether they're doing it bad, are they posing enforcing it or are they still enforcing it?
I think it's a mix. Some cities have caused enforcement. Some cities have decided to move or or are you still enforcing our current? It's good. We do have a reach good, right? Boom. The correct. Part one, version one.
Because technically, there is no reason why the legal action don't exclude previous reach codes, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is probably not a discussion for us. Yeah, I was just curious if there's been any more legal appointment. Adopting.
Okay, that's it. Let's move on to the next item, which is the discussion. And yes, I probably should have public comments. Do we have any public comments on the any of the the items on the work plan that was discussed? Yes, I probably should have public comments. Do we have any public comments on the, any of the, the items on the work plan that was discussed?
I don't see any.
Alright, next discussion item is destination electric EV fair.
Okay.
So do we have any numbers?
Okay, so we just have a brief presentation for a recap of the twenty twenty-three fair. That was held on Saturday, June third. We, sunny up to two P M at the La Salsa Community Center Parking Lot. Here are just some images from the fair. The vehicle show. These are the informational booths, organizations that we had at the event. There are all the, the ones that we discussed previously. There were no changes. That event. And then our EV models on display. We ended up having a few last minute changes. But also some additions last minute. Another version of the Porsche, it kind of taken both Rivian models, the truck, the SUV. Of a Mercedes C V. And then a little electric motorcycle as well. And then we have our EV bikes on display.
So the late additions were residents? That been, that happened at the fair, for the fair.
Um, a little bit of both. Yeah, we had some, some people who couldn't make it last minute. So we reached out to some other contacts of EVs. As well, it's just a couple of people who came to the event and were willing and excited to show their so I think the R one S was one of those that we brought in for, for a bit is willing to show it's, it's Rivian. So yeah, I think there's, I think with these events, there's always like a little bit of flux.
Sure.
And just it's, people aren't going to say hello. But I think everyone seemed excited to show their, show their vehicles and talk to people and answer questions. So some of our takeaways and we want to hear commissioner Van Rees and rest of you as well is some of the things that worked well was there were a variety of EVs on display. We tried to have the CVs and trucks, stance, as well as the variety in price ranges. There are also a variety of older and newer cars. I know the, the Studebaker conversion was kind of a ground favorite based on some feedback I heard. I think the marketing outreach went pretty well and led to a good turnout at the event. The location worked well and there's ample parking for people attending the event. It was especially well attended, the ten A and twelve K, something that we noticed. And then I think it worked really well to have a planning committee that had great talent. And Electric Auto Association as well as Commissioner Van Rees. And I think that just brought a lot of different perspectives and a lot of different experience. It's a landing incident. And I think that's, that's why it's successful, a large part of it. Some ideas for improvement. It was a pretty warm day. So some additional accommodations for EV owners during hot weather or just thinking about different ideas around that. I think some additional resources or items to drop people to the environmental commission table. Would be an idea for improvement. Potentially limiting the event to two to three hours instead of four. Writing more information on home electrification than solar. We did get a few questions around that. I know solar was kind of part of the conversation out there, but we didn't have the, an organization dedicated to that. And then another feedback we heard was providing food could be a drop. So your four questions that could be prompts for the commission, should the event be held annually? What worked well and what didn't for the event overall? And then what worked well and what didn't for the environmental commission booth? And what other elements would the commission like to see in a future showcase? And any other, other feedback, other questions?
Thank you, Casey. One question before getting, it's something before those particular questions. Did we have any feedback from the groups that were at tables, whether or not they were pleased with the interaction or not? I know we can speak for the environmental commission table, but do we hear anything from the other parties that were the table?
It's, I spoke to several of those people at other tables. The ones that I spoke to were pleased with the event, basically. Would be nice to get a full rundown of what they really thought, but you know, at least to my face was told that they were happy.
Yeah, and members of the electric owners, you should say that that's the best turnout they've seen in a really long time. We're to other events, even events that have like riding drives. I personally spoke to bicycle outfitters and they also said it was a really good turnout. So overall, like to check what the mission memory said. They said it was a good turnout to me. Yeah, I think we've surveyed, we haven't surveyed each organization, like the planning committee. Who has been to these events and planned that gave them the back to.
Maybe that's, that's, I mean, based on discussion. Maybe that's something that could give the, the sort of question that people that attended, I mean, the boost people, the people that get their feedback and suggestions maybe for next time. That's would be a, one good thing to do.
Do you think that on similar lines, it'd be, it seems like, you know, since there's so much traffic, people seem to be somewhat interested. It might be a good opportunity for surveys of the things we want, you know, get put from residents and on, on, you know, you know, we've had, we've had trouble getting responses on surveys. So this is going to be a good opportunity to be yourself.
Can I make a suggestion that somebody was there and enjoyed the the event? If you do something to drive capturing contact information with all those people, it's into what you're talking about, whether it's just having a big glass bowl saying drop your business card in. Or whether there's a QR code that they can scan with their phone or something like that. Capture those people's contact information because those are those are the, that's your, those are your people, right? Those are the residents that are passionate about this enough to come out and, and you want to try and, you know, maybe, maybe you're asking them, hey, do you want to be on a mailing list for a newsletter about initiatives that are, you know, supporting our, our, our private plan, things like that.
You know, we're good about doing whatever somebody does.
We did have a few people sign up, but a future and sustainability newsletter.
Code actually. You got something, you got a few.
A few, we could have definitely had a lot more.
We need to have something that's beyond the, the commission.
Load it up and, and make sure, yeah, make sure you capture as many of those folks who came as possible.
Yeah, so we had scattered like a QR code across the, across the event. Obviously, yeah, we were one of the more comfortable ones. Talking that aspect. I think it does trace back to, there was discussion early on about trying to set up an event right page, which I think in that system, then you get people sign up already and then that's automatically a mailing list. I don't know why that ended up falling out of favor, but that was certainly to me the biggest thing that could, you know, improve future ticket, that feedback guaranteed.
So if we want to circle back to the questions posed. I would say, you know, an event. Really, it may or may not be only EVs, right? You know, it, it, we may decide we need to either expand or focus in a different area, but I do give it's a good way to, to raise awareness and educate. You know, probably you did a great job in putting it together. So I think it's also, since we've got a little bit of learning to continue to do it annually is probably a good goal. Yeah, I think we talked a little bit about work, work and what didn't. We definitely needed something at the EC booth, right, that was visual, something more you know, engaging for, for people. I was surprised that as many people came over to talk to us as did without having anything really to draw them, much to draw them, but people were clearly chatting, which is good. I did feel like we lacked a like direct way to, you know, help people who are, link people with information they were trying to find. So it'd be really good if we could figure out exactly like, oh, you want to learn, you want to know about charging, go to that booth, which we did a little bit, but it would have been, I think solidify that out really, like you're interested in this, go talk to that vendor or some way to, to make that link really strong. This is if you're looking for this kind of information, here's where you're going to find it. So that's my, I think, overall feedback.
That sounds like a table, some informational booth.
Yeah. Yeah, or, or, you know, I didn't, either directing to the different organizations that would trade the table. You want to learn about home electrification or time tag terror or, but so yeah, I, I think we could maybe play that role. And also if there wasn't the information available at the event itself, how have they, you know, where, where would you find it online? What resource would you go to online, you know? Go to Bayren if you want to. It would be good if we could kind of be that information solider for the event and for applying for other base sources.
Yeah, kind of like an information booth, which is, you know, like we, we, you know, that's where you go to get information you need and people are sending to the right place. But that, that also means we need probably to have a few more booths maybe that are relevant to bidding electrification and solar as well as charge, something for charging, but maybe for the next one. Would be nice to have, I don't know if it's a you know, they could buy America, so EV go to Tesla, whatever it is, right? So about charging. Maybe we have two of it.
Or even like a, an electrician.
Yeah, I mean, there's, but I think, you know, there is the, the electric, charging at home, which is separate. Then there is the charging of the road that very often people are worried about charging the road. Would be nice to have, because we didn't have that. We don't, we didn't have a way of talking to people about how easy or not easy it can be to charge in the world when you're car. So that's would be another option. And then, you know, definitely having something about solid time. The information of proof about solid times and that. And probably one specific to electric heat pumps, I mean, heat pumps in Germany. And that, you know, that could be an electrician. Or tractor that, you know, that's that, it's totally pumps that could be there. To talk about that electrification on the home, how easy to do. What, what the process is and then we can have that information, you know, they can make that information available about the discounts, the rebates for the Bayren SBC and others. So, yeah.
Just think, go next time. Certainly you should. I think it, it'd be good to have an event annually, as Laura said. I think it maybe EVs could be the main draw, but you know, it could be all things sustainability. You know, they could sign through year by year, different things to focus on. Some, they'd plan to do that someone, or you know, other things that are related that people were interested in the one thing, they also be interested in the other. And definitely electrification information. So so definitely, I mean, I think it's a great idea to have people once a year get out, get together. Some of these things, it's not just the fact that we've learned about EVs, but all the fact that you can connect them. Maybe you're, it wasn't maybe enough. But maybe interested in. Yeah, EC booth was, it would be good to brainstorm how we could make it more relevant. Definitely be good to have some information on fingertips that we could, and then ways to point people. A lot of people came asking for different things. Some people came asking for something to do with complete streets, other things. So we, it'd be good for us to really maybe wrap a little bit and know what to, where to point people and what to really say. Yeah. Overall, a great event. Thank you.
I'm a bit off of that. I, I am curious about if complete streets commission would be interested in having booths present, just because it feels like this integration that's happening. And we got some questions that certainly we could have directed them. We have threads from that commission also, we don't want to, but you know, without identification there, people are going to answer that question. So.
Yeah, bike lanes, you know, traffic.
Yes.
Traffic management and all that stuff, it could be that could extend to other things. Parking management, for example.
And it helps people see that bike lanes are coming.
Yeah.
See that. And I think that's a general thing too. It just, it's, it, there's a tough balance of giving a lot, a bunch of car options. People want to see all, all car options. There's certain people that, you know, they have a certain brand in mind that, that's the only one they want to see. So you want to cover all the bases. At the same time, giving more weight to bikes so that we're getting that higher adoption of that would be amazing. And certainly the weight is, was car heavy for our first.
And it's okay. I think I'll be car heavy because it needs to be car heavy right now because people are still on the fence with regards to electric vehicles and charging and all that stuff. So I think and also the market is changing. New cars are coming onto the market every year. I'm not talking about one or two, I'm talking about big. So I think every year we have a chance of showcasing different cars and better and better cars because the technology is improving pretty fast. So I think we need to be, my advice would be to say as if we do it annually, and I think that's what we want to do, it seems. We should try to focus on the newer cars, not necessarily dismissing the other one, but make sure that we, you know, whenever new cars go onto the market, make sure that we try to have as many as those as possible and it can go. And I think that, that means also potentially reaching out to dealerships that we had a couple of ones. We had Volvo and we had Nissan. Maybe we should reach out to other ones. I'm thinking that BMW was a big miss because they are two or three electric cars actually. And we even have a U P M, for example, I think we got Mercedes by chance at the end. But we, otherwise, you know, they have three electric cars that are available on the market and more coming. So I, you know, I, I think we need to probably that's, that's one of the improvements we can Probably that's that's one of the improvements we can make, is making sure that we have. A good roster of cars, but also cars that are available for people to buy today that are recent cars. You know, try to make. Make it as 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 wide as possible. Uh, which means potentially a big cross case, that's another question, but I think five, I mean, the the location was perfect, actually, I think it's. It's great location, I don't, I should tell you. I think, you know, your comment about, um, E V owners, great parties, so it's a very good one. I think we should next time for plan to have maybe a chair and an umbrella or something, so people can be in the shade. Because they stand for three or four hours in the sun. Um, so I think having, uh, you know, maybe an umbrella or something that can shape them, so that they can sit down and relax and be shaded. That being in the sun for three or four hours would be would be good.
I sometimes used to, we didn't have any marketing, so nobody else.
So, and then, uh, from a marketing standpoint, I think, uh, we can also improve on the marketing. What I'm thinking is that it would be great to have a banner of Main Street the week of. Like, starting the week before, ten days before, you know. Because we didn't have it downtown, that, I know you guys put flyers and that stuff, and businesses, but I think having a big banner of something that's. Obvious to anybody going to Main Street, one, you know, eight to ten days prior to the event, I think, would would probably. To draw home people as well.
There was a banner on San Antonio.
There was one on San Antonio, but. It was not a banner, it was just a side, the side of the street.
Try and architect next year, so I mean, I think you'll, we we will have a sound committee to sort out details, I think that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thing is, I think that, you know, the promotion was great, and we can always do more, right, yeah. Yeah, I saw a lot of places. But, yeah, there's always.
But I mean, that that's, you know, the kind of feedback we can provide now, I think, you know, it's when we have a certain committee working on the next. Annual fair, that, you know, this is.
I'd offer two things that you can consider, way when you start the planning, one is. Is if you want to be sort of centered to Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, or if you want to spread. Marketing a little wider to draw people from neighboring communities as well. And there were some people from outside of Los Altos there, but it's where you want to focus your marketing efforts, and I I don't. Go one, I'm not promoting one thing or the other, just. Evaluate that the planning committee for next year should evaluate that, determine how far they want to reach out. The other, the other suggestion that I have for the future planning, by the way, I agree approximately on a twelve month cycle, but. I think you may want to consider reaching out on other things that the environmental commission is working on. Or other things that are the focus of the the city council that are environmentally related, be it water issues, be it. Tree issues, you know, tree ordinance, you know, have those as. So rather than just sort of E V fair, make it sort of an environmental fair, if you.
Yeah.
And and the the primary anchor could be the E Vs, but bring these other things in as well.
Yeah.
And then by complete streets and public parks.
Right, yeah.
But I think part of that, too, goes with how how city staff and the city itself that that evaluates and. And how they felt about how the fair went, and whether or not it should be focused or or expanded to increase. Include more things that are city objectives.
Would be bad to have someone with a booth thinking about gray water.
A lot of things in the cap, and you can't cover it all. But, you know, pick pick some things that are soon to be on the horizon. You know, with 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 activities at the council level or 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 at the commission level for that.
But, yeah, I I I hope you agree with that, I think we need to, you know, that could be something to rethink is the the. The number of booths, which booth we have there in addition to the the fair inside, the E V fair inside.
But I I think the location was fine, I think the people did a well, they're great job organizing it, and, uh. There are certainly, uh, I I hope that the other booths there felt that they got the activity and the traction that they'd like to come again.
That's a whole nother ball max.
Alright, so it should be event, uh, be had done, maybe one more trial and one day one more. For the E C, E C booth, we talked about it, so I should say, adding more resources, more information that the booth would be useful, so that would bring by a bigger operation, but. I think it's going to be important to to work on that.
It seems like we need an official E C booth fan, too. Just because there was that confusion for some, of like, looks like we're just the city.
Yeah.
Can't ask it, it's asking, uh, how this, why this permit was delayed.
Yeah.
Any other suggestions?
Plug a small freezer into the F one fifty Lightning and fill it with Otter Pops. But, yeah. And then tell parents you can get an Otter Pop for your kids. If you give us your email address, the kids will force every parent there to submit the email address. As, well, I don't know if you guys know, but the city keeps a stockpile of Otter Pops that knows very well that Los Altos kids love Otter Pops.
There you go.
I I I think, I think that that was a hit like the the walk being. Run off of a plug off of the I O R there. Yeah, so I I agree with you, Pete, things like that are sort of a draw. I I know I went to one fair down in in, uh, Menlo Atherton High School, they were running a, a. Roll in, it's a kitchen range that you run off. You know, it's a big draw, you know, a battery run, standard kitchen range for cooking.
The food trucks are very good idea, by the way, so I think that would be fantastic to have some of the trucks there. Because you can, you know, people with ten old go, like, go for the food trucks and go to the E Vs, and. So I think whatever we can do to roll off people, I think it's a good. Uh, making this a more convenient.
Regarding the length of time, um. I I think four hours is probably the right, I think, uh. If you go too much longer than that, it's it's a long day, uh. I don't know if two or three will do it, because.
A bit short, I think.
It's been short, so I sort of like the idea of straddling the day.
Let's see, if you have the food trucks, for example, next year, I think you can definitely stretch it a little bit. But not stretching, but, you know, you tend to keep it the way it is, I think people are going to stick around. Because you're right, that by one thirty was very late. Uh, but also it's, you know, might be because there is not enough. To keep people there, or maybe we don't bring enough people, but I think.
Given what Laura just said about electric food trucks, maybe they want to consider a better. You know, I'm sure they're all guests.
Oh, yeah.
Do we want to? Do you want to see if there is someone doing something?
They drink food truck.
We did have those conversations. It's whatever.
Alright. I don't think that will be still, uh, with us. So, did you have any, um, feedback, comments?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I I didn't want to, I don't want to repeat everything everybody said, but I thought it was a really ru- well-run event. Um, I do think it should be broadened, uh, to include a a lot of electrification items. Uh, appliances you would find in an electrified house, and we should have experts there to be able to answer those questions. In the one hour where I was there, I probably answered three questions about, uh, heat pumps. Toves, uh, the the whole range of things, so I think that would be a really nice addition would be to. Uh, make it a E V and electrification fair, um. Uh, but otherwise, I thought it was really good, I thought the time was appropriate, uh, and I thought it was really well attended. But it was a good, good fair, good job.
Thank you, Dom. So I think the planning committee has to work that out for next year, I would. Yeah.
Well, I think, uh. Good feedback from the city, and if if it's warranted, or if it's. You could start arranging for a planning committee for the following, the next year, I don't know how many, how many months in advance you need, but. Six months probably isn't going to do it, you know, so you're almost. It's starting on, if you're going to have something annually, sort of going to get started for next year.
And I would recommend maybe a little bit earlier in the year, both because of climate, but also because, do you, even people starting to. Yeah, leave and. Guardians and all the celebrations.
Congratulations and stuff, yeah.
It will be, it will be, that kind of a full idea, but that's not it, that's something. You guys have to think, the planning committee will have to figure out. Okay, good, uh, any more comments, suggestions, good. Thank you, yeah, go ahead. Yes, sorry. Do we have any public comments on this, uh, to get on Jill Dines?
I don't think we have any members.
Yeah, I don't think we have any members of this one. Yeah, we started well. Uh, and then we don't, we're not talking about reach codes, so. Alright, uh, let's move on then, on the commissioners' reports and comments, so there were two council meetings. Since our last meeting. I was on the, at the twenty third meeting, who was at the meeting for that? It was Charlie. Casey, do we know who was at the, was that the main, the main line council meeting?
I can't tell if I was supposed to be reporting about that meeting, or that was the guest. Discussion, I don't know if I was supposed to be. You know, officially, there are just. Part of it, not all of it, so I didn't think.
So I I I might have been shouting, she's not here, maybe you can tell us, uh. About the deep flow discussions.
So, it's been a long time now, uh. The general takeaway, I believe, was that, um, the, you know. Enforcement will be modified to be. Then whether being responsible, uh. And. Remember what the fine. Increased enforcement, the the basic takeaway, I can go back and provide real details. I do remember that I. The name of implementation.
Well, it's just a discussion, I, yeah, get out, so it's the only ones has to come back, so it's going to take a couple of meetings. Yeah.
The one other thing that I think was, it been full of pertinence to this, is that. The code enforcement has moved from police department to planning staff, let's name all. So now there's a resource to actually enforce the new ordinance. Really didn't have much enforcement prior.
Alright, so, uh, I was at the, I was at the big twenty third meeting, and I was assigned to that major twenty third meeting, uh. The main discussion relative to the commission is the discussion that took place around the commissions. So there was a draft ordinance, uh, that was brought to council at this meeting, uh. And a few things I wanted to mention. I made a public comment, I think I discussed that. With you before. And then one, one key point that came of the public comment, which I wanted to. Uh, talk about today, because that may require for us to have discussions in the future about it. Is that, um, the public comment that I was making was on behalf of the commission, so I basically started saying that I was making. Comment on behalf of the commission, and then the legal counsel who was there stopped me and said, basically, you can't do that, um. And I asked her why I couldn't do that, and she said it's because. You haven't, uh, discussed it at public meetings, that's actually we had, so I told her, yes, we have discussed it at public meetings before. And, but did you vote? I said, no, we didn't vote, so. Bottom line is, apparently, uh, from a legal standpoint. Any of us, or, we, we, whether the chair, the vice chair, or any of the other commissioners can't speak. To the cap, make a public comment on behalf of the commission, unless that was discussed at a public meeting before and took a vote on. Right? Which is from a practical standpoint for us, uh, is a little bit challenged, because our meetings are one for months, and they have council meeting twice a month. And the agenda of the council meeting usually is not made publicly until a few days before the. The council meeting, so it's very hard for us, obviously, very difficult for us to have a discussion or take a vote on a potential. Public comment from one member of the commission to the council on something that's relevant to what we do. Uh, so I think that's one thing that's, and and that's only possible for meetings that would take place the day after. So, for example, the meeting that's going to take place tomorrow, there is a, uh, and that's something on the council calendar, which is. Rather than to what we've done and what we do, uh, which I'll come back to that later, but it's difficult for us to. Make a public comment on behalf of the commission at future meetings of the council, because we won't be able to talk about it directly. So, something to think about, um. I would suggest, and that's up to you to decide whether it makes sense or not, but I would suggest that we can bring that back to the commission for discussion. To see if there are ways, um, we could make public comments on behalf of the commission. Or find a way of doing that, making public comments on behalf of the commission, we can always make a public comment as a resident, we can always say we commission or what it. But I think it's, doesn't have necessarily the same impact as making a comment on behalf of the commission, so that's the the only point I want to make on that, we can. You know, I don't, I don't know what your reaction is to this, but I just wanted to make it. Yeah.
At the added, I guess, time scale would be that if we don't fold out something, it has to be on our agenda, yeah.
Yes.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, because so it's one more week, you add the one more week on top of that, so. So from a practical standpoint, extremely, would be extremely difficult for us to be able to.
Do we make a comment that's sort of like a discussion, even that's, that it's a report out?
Do clarify questions.
By the way, of a clarifying question, uh, what we did in the past. Previous, probably before a number of you were on this commission, uh, we had. Some committees that were working on an item, and when that item would come before, if it's something that. That there was a a vision, like, we did this in Reach Codes one point zero, we knew it was coming to the council, so that subcommittee actually. Drafted a statement, if you will, that then the commission discussed as part of that reporting, and that statement was then voted on. And then it was sent to the council as a statement. So, my suggestion, by way of a question, is that, you know, if we have some groups working on, um. The water ordinance or meeting on the tree ordinance, if there is an issue that you think is important, that that, the the commission as a whole. Wants to weigh in on, then when you bring your report in, also bring a draft. Comment that that it can also be reviewed and discussed. That's how we did it the past, uh, and previous, uh, environmental permission. Way back when, when, when Jay and others were.
We actually did the same. We actually did the same with the gas power.
Yeah, we had that set up.
Right, that was a statement that was voted on by the commission. This is an issue that, this is the way it's always been. And ways to. Express the commissions, you know. What's standing viewpoints, I would say, so that, you know, we. Have this discussion so that we can have on record a vote of. Our position. Yes, you have to. Have some, some sort of vision of what's going to be coming to the council, but if you have enough thought to. Have the commission discuss it.
So. We've got to have too much discussion around it, so. Would that be okay if we bring that back to the commission as a legend item for us to have a real discussion about this? And how are we going to address it? Do you think that's important or is just?
I would. Recommend, I don't know how useful a general discussion.
I have a suggestion for you. Why don't you, why don't you wait until the city attorney and staff? Ask the city attorney and staff for their guidance on what would be. What methods are appropriate? And then have your, and then agendize your discussion on it, but, but first seek some. Guidelines and parameters within which to operate, because otherwise your discussion may go in directions that. You ultimately don't have the latitude to go with. So, so get some, get some staff to think that first trouble. This is what was the comment you were. Going to say as the, on behalf of the commission at this meeting.
Oh, it's about, it was about the commission. And the number of commissioners, the number of members, and the duties and responsibilities of the commission, that was the thread. And we had discussions and stuff about that in terms, in the past. Anyway, so. Casey and Danny, I'll get back to you about that, and then see if we can get some advice from the legal counsel. You know, what kind of parameters are we working? Wait. And then we'll see if we'll bring it back.
I think the game is never to end now, if it's wrong, I say in common on behalf of the commission. The commission needs to discuss it. Otherwise commissioners aren't able to come speak as residents.
You can also have more than one commissioner, in a sense, say, either make separate comments or Don could cede his time to you. And, you know, you were then making a statement that's not only representative of your own position as a resident. But it carries a lot of weight to say that I also have, you know, these other residents who have seen it time to me because. They share this point of view, and, you know, this, this, there's, there's. A number of things that could be done, but the bottom line is that the commission is a Brown Acted organization, right? Because it is governed by the Brown Act, that means that any, any position the commission takes has to be established. Through that first, you know, noticing the public that is going to be taken up on an agenda, and then, you know. Discussed in the public forum and voted on. And then once it's voted on. It almost becomes moot as far as making the comment verbally at the meeting, because if you pass a resolution. As a commission, it becomes part of the public record, and it certainly goes to council once you've passed a resolution for two. So I, I would say just have, you know, Julie's already sort of. Purple lady on some of this stuff, and I think maybe just. Maybe we need a memo, because it's not just the environmental commission, this is all the commissions, and it probably should also. Go into the commission handbook and be a part of everybody's training to understand that. That's my suggestion.
Yeah. Okay, so that was one thing. The other thing I wanted to recall on this, obviously, what. The draft ordinance and what was in the draft of the announcement was discussed. And you know, there were discussions about reducing the number of commissioners on some specific commissions, reducing the number of meetings and so on, so. So based on the feedback, based on the draft ordinance and the feedback that council gave to staff. The environmental commission will have seven commissioners, as we are today, that stays the same. We'll have monthly meetings that stays the same with the exception that no commission will have any meetings in July and August, no, July and December. Which means that actually we have ten commission meetings a year now. We won't be able to meet in July, we won't be able to meet in December.
Unless you need a special.
Yeah, exactly. So unless, unless we need a special meeting, we can always call special meetings. And those special meetings can be called any, any month of the year, right, including July and December. That's also the other thing. And then there were some discussions where there was some, there was a draft. That was in the ordinance of the powers and duties of the environmental commission, and I don't know if you've read it, but I'm going to read it for you. The commission shall. Take, submit, and then you will report to council, providing an update on the implementation of the climate action and adaptation plan. As well as updates on any relevant environmental policy or programs. Review and provide recommendations for the implementation of the cap, including prioritization of cap action items, make annual recommendations for changes or updates to the plan. That must be seen. And really provide recommendations to the council that affect the natural and built environment to inform policy, budget, and CIP prioritization. And to serve as a forum for community input and engagement. So that's. What was in the draft, I don't think that was changed at all by the council, so that's what we're going to find along in us. And that's what our duties and responsibilities will be, which is not that different from what we had before. And it's pretty much, I mean, there is no way anything of, any, any of this can be changed at this time. So. Yeah, sure.
My question. When it says to, you know. Discuss capital limitation, et cetera. Are we at liberty to pick? Any section of the cap, decide that that's something that. Review and maybe provide a recommendation to council on, or is it? Only things that come down as a question of council? For us to be working, like, because the cap has very strong set of. Items.
Well, every year we work on the work plan. And that work plan is reviewed by the council. That's part of what is in the annual meetings and the annual report. So I think it's up to us to put. The type of actual items we want to put in the work plan and bring that to council, have council decide whether that's what, that's something they are on board with or they want to change something about. So that, that process, I don't think is changing. It's pretty much the same. So that I, we worked on our work plan, we have a lot, most of what we have in the work plan is that from the cap. So that's what we're going to bring to council. We don't have a date yet, actually, if I know where for that meeting, but that's what we'd be discussing. You know, meeting council. But that, yes, that's not really changed.
I have one question or comment, and that is, in order to really report on the cap, it's certain. To me, it has to be a coordinated effort with staff, because. There's a lot of information that's of technical nature that has to be drawn from Silicon Valley Clean Energy and others. And perhaps even if the way the cap was formulated, there's also a tool that they were using, what was it?
Eagerly.
Eagerly tool to.
Yeah, that.
To, to, to identify how your progress is being done, so. I don't know if this is something that our chair or our chair and our vice chair just works with staff on to, to bring a draft of this. Report on how we're doing on the cap. To discuss at this commission, and then that becomes the report to council. Yep. I guess that where I'm headed with all of this, my comments are that I view that has to be. We had to know how to work with staff in order to accomplish this task. And so, you know, I'd be looking for, or asking as part of the commission, asking for guidance from staff, instead of the timing and how to get together and, and produce a. A quality document that, that, that has meaning to the council and to, to your bosses and staff.
Yeah, I think the GHG inventory process is, is a big piece of that, is making sure that we go into where we are, based on the actions we've done, which will be able to track. Which actions are effective and which are not as effective as expected, and then just importantly, I think that's. You know, the way I'm looking at, you know, if we don't have a regular GHG inventory, we could never be able to. Really understand what the cap is doing or what the actions we're taking. And I think that's, that should be about, I don't think it's annual for that, for this GHG inventory, but definitely, yes, I think we should.
So you're interpreting the annual report to council to be the, yeah, that's up to you on the cap?
That's what I sort of hear, heard with the, the task that we've been giving, given, now it. There can be in-depth. Updates, and maybe it's every other year that's an in-depth update, but I, I don't know how to structure that, but what I heard is there's. There's some sort of report each year, depending on the level, I think has to be in agreement with staff and, and with the. The, the people on this commission that are driving it, that bring something to the commission to say, yeah, this is what we should, you know, this is. This is our report back.
Well, I mean, I think that the thing is, we need. There is no clear definition, you know, it's duties and responsibilities, I think, set to us and staff to define how we want to do.
Exactly.
And I think. You know, have, have a comprehensive report every year, I don't think it's. I mean, it's doable, but I think it's going to take a lot of work from staff.
So the reports from commission to council in general. Are reports on what the commissions have accomplished during the year, but they're not necessarily the reports. It's not necessarily a comprehensive report on. Statistically, where we stand relative to our goals in the cap, because that work is, is for sure staff work, so. What I would foresee is the commission would say, here are the things that we took up. The issues that we have advanced, the things that we voted on and moved up to council, the things the council has approved, so. Assuming that the legal overhang goes away, we could say, okay, you know, we, we, we pass these reach code ordinances and so on. I think staff would create a, a report that actually has more technical detail, and then the environmental commission should review that before it goes to council. Because you're the ones who could look at it and say, I don't really understand this, it doesn't make sense, or we need more clarification on this, and. You know, you apply your expertise to that report to make sure that it's. Up to the expectations. That it should meet. But the creation of that technical report is going to be staff work, and, and what you actually report to council is. The things on your work plan that you've taken up, the decisions that you've made, and, and so forth.
That's what we've done for years. So that was my confusion, that I was hearing something different than we've done for.
Yeah, I mean, that's. And actually, that's my understanding of, I think we, you know, we, I would, I would report for us as a commission, what we brought down today. Based on the work plan that we had presented to the council. And then what we've done and not done, and what other things we've done on top of that. And then we have a discussion after that of the next work plan or the work plan for the following year, that I bring up, you know, get the council to agree on that, if there's any challenges that they feel are necessary.
And you're only going to have for that, for that joint meeting. There will be several other commissions that do a joint meeting with, with council, that can be. Not all of them, because that would be untenable, but you may have three or four other commissions that are also doing a joint. Meeting that night with council, and so probably likely to have maybe. Twenty minutes or so to, to make your report and answer some questions and have some, have some dialogue with council. Is that, you guys probably don't have it. Haven't been to one of those joint meetings yet. That's my best recollection, and, and, you know, some of the folks that have been around for a while probably. Have recollections of similar.
But we still have the. That we cement, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, and then with regards to the cap specifically and reporting on the cap, I think that should be something, you know, that's part of what we could be doing every year by reporting on the actions that were taken during the year or so, and that's what actions we could take and follow it. But I think also, you know, at some point, and that's something that. Would, would fall on your lap, just basically doing the GHG inventory, not on a yearly basis, because I think that would be too much. And I don't think we would learn that much, looking at it on a yearly basis, but every two years. I think that makes a lot of sense. The last one we did, the GHG inventory was for the cap. And we had two thousand eighteen as our base year, right, because that's the year we had the most information. So I think part of what will be discussed at the council meeting would be. This year probably do another one. Because it's, you know, we, two thousand twenty-three, we should be able to do at least two thousand twenty, if not two thousand twenty-one. So anyway, so that's. So that, that, because that's the only way we're going to be able to say, okay, this is working, because we've reduced our emissions. And this is where we reduced our emissions, and this is because we've passed an audit and so on. So I think that's. All right, so that's all I wanted, yeah.
Same question. Was there any guidance that maybe should?
There was no discussion around subcommittees at that meeting, but probably is maybe something that. Council may discuss it for future meetings, but right now there is no discussion.
That'll be probably also something that comes from. The city attorney, because the, the, the issue around subcommittees is a Brown Act issue, right? When you have multiple subcommittees and somebody participates in four different subcommittees. Each, each being comprised of different commission members, the potential to inadvertently have a core. And discussion issue through a chain of discussions. Is what the city attorney is most concerned about in this regard, so again, you know, let's wait until we get. A memo on it or something. Right?
All right, so that's what I had to report of the twenty base, but the. Before we move on to the next action item, which is city council assignment, which is pretty quick, I just wanted to mention that. Tomorrow at the council meeting, there is an agenda on the council calendar which has to do with San Antonio Road, if you saw it. But so the, the idea is to reduce San Antonio Road to change specifically the bike lanes. To make them class four bike lanes, meaning protected bike lanes on San Antonio. The city received a grant. In the amount of seven, seven point two million dollars, actually, to be able to do that. But this, but the city needs to commit their own funds also to the improvement to be able to get that right. That, that necessary funding for the city is one point eight billion dollars. So that's technically, because it's in the council calendar, unless it's ruled, it's going to move forward, but it might be ruled. Because it's one point eight billion dollars that the city has to spend on that. I made a public, I sent a public comment, I sent an email, because I won't be at the meeting tomorrow, because I'd be traveling. But I sent on my behalf, not on behalf of the commission, but I, I made a public comment supporting. The proposal to have class four protected bike lanes on San, San Antonio. And just a reminder, actually, for those of you who were not on the cap subcommittee, that came from a discussion that the cap subcommittee had with. Staff and complete street commissions, when we were reviewing their draft, open street master plan, that's one of the recommendations we had made. And that actually moved forward and was prioritized in their fiber plan, so I think definitely. As, as an environmental permission, and it's actually in the report that went to council, we are behind what the Koki Street Commission is, is proposing. But I also sent a comment to reinforce that as well. So if you. Still have time to do it. If you want to send an email. Supporting. That particular agenda item, I will urge you to do it. You don't have to say much, just say you're supporting it, you're in favor of, of, of favoring, favor of putting. Just for bike lane, protected bike lane on San Antonio. That's all you have to say, and I think the more we are to say it, the better. Because I, 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 I think it might be put in the council calendar, so. Because I, 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 I think it might be put in the council calendar, so. All right. So that's what I had to say for today. Regarding these meetings. Okay, city council assignment for July eleventh and August twenty-second. We have any, so July eleven, I won't be around, just to let you know, so.
I, I can take July eleventh.
Okay, Tom, thank you very much. We have someone for the twenty-second count for August the twenty-second.
Yeah.
And then we have people assigned to, to the meetings, right? Yeah, you, you're going to go to lobby.
And I think that the other one is June.
Okay.
So there's only one July meeting in one of these.
One July meeting and one obviously.
And we are not meeting enough.
We're not, but I don't know, but in theory we're not, right? I don't know. Right now we don't have meetings set for July.
Correct. I think we were planning on skipping July meeting for the new direction and return to Congress.
Yeah. I think the commission's actually on the council calendar.
Isn't there a council meeting on the twenty-fifth of July? No.
We'll double check. All right, good. Before we finish, I just wanted to bring up two potential future agenda items that were ordered by two commissioners. One is to have an update on the emergency operations center interview from staff. And the other one, which is a presentation from B G, which is a, a cycles based company.
A I energy analytics.
And I wanted the commissions to agree that something that we should put on the future agenda. To be able to put in a future. We are, we all okay with that, as potential future agenda items. So the bottom line is.
The emergency operation center, people like, why we want.
Well, I, I think the emergency operations center, because there was a number of things in the cap that we. Recommended as possibilities for to be included in that. So I think that's a reasonable addition to discuss.
Yes, wondering if people are like, why, but yes, there's, I think because. You know, it's the adaptation plan to and, and the, and our ability to serve our residents in, in extreme events, I think. You know. There was a lot covered in the cap, so that would fall under what needs to go in that which is the operations center. So I just thought. Earlier at the planning stages versus later would be good for us to understand what they're.
All right. So that's, I think we only need agreements for that. Yeah.
And I can.
Yeah, and then for the.
Two things about visually, so what they do is they primarily they work with utilities and analyze smart meter data. And they have signals for all the major appliances that are in homes. So they can analyze that data and then spit out exactly when what's running for each home. And this is data that they get typically to the utility and then the utility can determine. How they can target different things. I mean, there is some appliance that's using more energy than it, it should, or you know, that maybe needs to be updated. So I, I saw some of that data, very compelling. It's, you know, you can see, okay, this is why your washer turned on, when your oven turned off. It kind of helps figure out what you're using your energy for. And then maybe, you know, see what you can do to reduce the energy use. So that's one thing. And then the other, so potentially they could be a partner of audits. If they could partner with S V C D and get the data of the city. They can, you know, then maybe do automatic audits for certain buildings. Exactly what that building is using at the time. And then the other thing they're piloting is an E P charging application, which, you know. Does load balancing and the smart charging for when, you know, you plug in your E P and decides when to charge it based on. The rates and potentially then who else charging E P's et cetera. In the neighborhood to kind of balance the load. So I thought, since there are. I think it's different and then eventually what they're talking about is potentially sending electricity back. On to the grid. So I don't know exactly what grid shift does and I don't know. How this is unique or different. Yeah, yeah. So. There's a lot of questions for the answers, but I'm willing to hear as much as I. Free said, he should have not, you know, how it would fit in. How we would, the city would interact with like our service, but. Don't bear more about it.
I think. Be very, you know, part of one, one of the actions in the cap is also to residents and commercial buildings. And we still don't know quite how we're going to do it because sending someone to the, the building or. House is gonna cost money, right? So it's not that simple. So maybe that's an easy way, a, a, a cheaper solution to do. On the global scale, on the Los Santos scale, the audience, right? And be able to provide that information, that should be.
Yes.
So that's the way I'm looking at it. I think that might be useful to hear what they have to say. And I know they're eager to partner with the city because. They're based in Los Santos, so we just got that too. So. I know we have questions. I think that's the point, right? So is, is that a, is that a go for that one potentially as well?
Good to hear it different, different ways. See, I see how it differs from grid shift and. There's some other things that look at, you know, individual home power usage. But it'd be more interesting if they, they have a way to, to gather the data, look at city wire or something. Is there something unique about Los Angeles? Yeah, it can be addressed.
All right. So that sounds like, that's gonna make it another list.
True.
Yeah. And, and I'm sure that at least for visually, we can probably schedule them pretty fast because I know that they were kind of interested in meeting with us pretty soon. So. It's just a matter of getting back to them. And then the emergency operations center, that would be nice to have someone. From staff, I don't know that we, that could be, but come and tell us what, what the plan is. And then so we can have discussions around that and bring up, you know, some of the stuff that the commission would like to see.
We, we did something similar to that during the planning stages for the, for the community center.
Right.
Provided some early on input that, that I, I think helped in the planning and I think that was, that'd be, to me, that's sort of the objective here, but. I don't think there's a whole lot left to do for the emergency operations center, other than get a generator and put some antennas on. And I'm not happy that we're getting a generator.
I think that we should get somebody.
You're not gonna be able to do anything about that. I, I, I. Good same way, but unfortunately.
Well, let's see, let, let, let's see what they have to say, if we can bring them in.
We'll find more, find out more.
Yeah, that's right. To get that soon on the agenda. Gonna be based on availability for you guys, but not necessarily where. Would be the most ideal person within this staff.
I think a lot of what was in the cap though is, was. How to integrate it within the, in the community, which is something a little bit different than the nuts and bolts.
Yeah, yeah.
Can be built, but.
For that, you might want to actually bring in the. Oh, the block action teams and the hams crew. You know, the, the residents that actually coordinate in the event of an emergency when our traditional communication lines are not available. You know, Harry guy, for example, could come in and, and give you a, a quick. Rundown of what, what he's doing, which I think would be really interesting.
Then, no, I'm just, there's, I'm trying to grasp me at the name of the, the producer or producer that does it somewhere. There is, there's, it's different than block action. Los Angeles. There's a group. No, it's all start, anyway. Senior moment, I'll figure it out.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any, anything else?
Resilient also.
Yeah, what is it called?
Resilient.
There you go. All right, anything else? Before we wrap up. But good. Okay, so let's adjourn the meeting today. Eight forty-five. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Paul.
Travel safe, Tom.
Stay with us.
Have a good evening, guys.